Knowledge that we're on the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And we thank the Mi'kmaq people of today for their ancestors being so generous to our ancestors in helping them get started from a rough start to these beautiful lands here in Picta County. And we are all treaty people. Okay, now we'll move along to our agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
And seconded by Counselor McKeel. Are there any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And those against? Motion approved. Are there any emergency resolutions this evening? Any emergency resolutions? Seeing none, we'll move right along to their minutes from our last meeting on August the 5th. Are there any errors, corrections, omissions to those minutes of August the 5th? Oh, sorry, go right ahead, Joe.
On the vote for the letter to the NSFM, I voted for that. And it was in the minutes that I voted nay.
Okay, and so what was the vote on that one, I forget?
Seven, five, so it wouldn't change anything.
It wouldn't change anything?
No.
Okay, alright, so we'll get that changed in the minutes then? Thanks, Charlie. Any other errors, omissions, or corrections to those minutes? One last time, any errors, omissions, or corrections to those October 5th meeting? August 5th, I'm moving along too fast here. Okay, we will approve those minutes as was sent out. Now we have some pieces of correspondence. One is a thank you from the Victor Lobster Carnival. Thank you from Chad Transit for grants, both those two were for grants. And we have a letter from the Nova Scotia Municipal Affairs regarding our land use bylaw and our planning strategy, as well as the amendments. So, while the thank you letters are nice, that's probably the more critical letter that we're dealing with this evening that is gonna cause us to have to review. Do you want to, Brian, just give us some idea of what that's gonna detail in terms of work?
Sure.
You know, I know we're gonna have to have some public sessions probably and whatnot on agriculture, what it's about.
Sure. So, the bylaw was approved by the minister with the amendments to the planning strategy and one amendment to the LUBM, that's just that definition to include small option homes. Our definition didn't exclude them, but they wanted it specifically in there to say they were included, so that's, that's fine. So, in essence, what this does, it gives us one year from the date of the letter to basically come up with a strategy on how to protect agricultural land. So, we will, very similar process to what we just went through with the minimum planning. We will, probably, the first step will be to do some analysis work and look at how others in the province have accomplished that, I guess. And then, from there, draft the language around what the bylaw would look like, then go out to the public with consultation. And then, you go through, once you have your consultation, you then go through the process of two readings and adoption, and then sent to the minister, to the director for review. If the director says it complies with the statement of provincial interest, then it's approved. If not, it goes to the minister, and the minister approves, or the minister imposes, whatever it is. But this way, the way it is right now, they're giving us the opportunity to come up with the rules and the consultation with the community on what that looks like.
So, are we looking at a six-months procedure here, something like that, or?
I would say we're probably six months to, six to eight months before you'd wanna go to the public, have your work done, complete it. Because it's gonna take you, it takes two months to pass the bylaw, right? Between first and second reading. So, technically, you could do that at the month 11, you could be first reading and second reading at month 12. And I think if you're probably moving along at a good pace and you're not quite there, I'm sure the minister would grant an extension on that, so.
Okay, thank you for that, because it is probably gonna be disruptive in this county. It's, I've talked to the Warden of East Hans, and it was very disruptive there, to the point where they, they had to throw it in the garbage can because they couldn't get any agreement. And part of East Hans already had a bylaw strategy for agriculture, the part you see as you drive down the 102 to Halifax, but the other part up in the more northern region of East Hans didn't. And it was very, very upsetting to a lot of farmers, a lot of people in that area, to the point where they gave up on it. Now, theirs went through the minister, I think, because they already had half of the county that had it, and that, that's what was explained to me, that's probably why it went through. But depending on what we come up with here, I think we will hear probably a significant amount from the agricultural community, because we did the last time it was tried. So, do we have to put this out for tender again, or do we continue with the people that did the original plan?
That contract has ended, so, and just one other note on the bylaw, the bylaw is in effect. So, we published it last Thursday. So, the bylaw and planning strategy has force of law as of last Thursday, so any developments or anything as of last Thursday, the new rules apply. So, that, as of last Thursday, that contract ended with Upland. So, probably the first step is to have the PAC convene and come up with a
Plan.
A game plan on how they want to do it. Because we did RFP the last time, when we selected Upland, we did go to request for proposals, so we can turn that around fairly quick, but if that's the wishes.
The first step, then, you're saying, is for a PAC meeting and go from there?
Yeah, I would say.
Counselor Dewar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, one of the things I was gonna ask was if we'd be able to have Upland continue, and I guess I heard that answer, some of it. So, what happened in Anika Nish and Geisbro County? Those, Upland did those, did they pass or fail the test too? Do you have any idea?
I believe they, they passed, they passed in Anika Nish, but Anika Nish does have an agricultural zone, so they did protect.
That.
Yeah. And Geisbro, I'm not sure what the status of that one is, but.
So, um, if, if we put a tender out and we get Upland again, would we be able to kinda go with the agricultural zone the same as Anika Nish did? Or how would that work? How, there's likely an easier way around this than...
Ultimately, you need to protect. And whether that's, there's probably a light touch and a heavy touch. So, Kings County, we would put on the heavy end, right? Very heavily regulated around agricultural land. Some of the others, it's probably more of a light touch. So, ultimately, you've got to find that balance of protection versus development.
And I think when we go to public meetings, we're gonna hear that loud and clear, that difference between, you know, those farms who say, we wanna protect it because of the land for agriculture we can, we heard some of that before. And those, on the other hand, who want, are near the end of their career in farming and want to be able to sell their property, that's their pension, those are the two sides of it that I think we're gonna hear from. But, you know, we start, and it may very well be Upland that gets it again, they seem like they've gotten most of them across the province, so.
Well, I was just thinking then, because they've got some experience with what we wanted and what took place, right? And as far as it goes, if Minister Lorn, or he, he should understand a little bit about firms, if they're gonna be passed down, or sometimes, a lot of the firms I know around, they had to sell a few lots along their roads and along the corners to pay their bills. And that's how they existed all those years. Plymouth is a perfect example, and the River Road, as well as even out in my country, in Bridgeville and Springfield and different places, they sold lots. And I think you're just gonna open the worst can of worms you ever seen if you're gonna tell, if you're gonna tell me I'm not selling my land, I'd subdivide it right now and it'd be all separate. But that's not what we want, we want to be able to do it the right way, the way we're used to doing it. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. We've paid, this is, again, a more cost to the taxpayer to amend this bill, amend our bylaw. Is there an estimate of what we're looking at for this, these changes? Ballpark?
Maybe 20 to 25.
Okay. And how much do we have so far into our bylaw?
That's a good question. Over 100. 25 to 150 was the total.
Yeah.
But that was over...
Yes, quite a time, so, yes, it was a...
Two years.
Absolutely so. I'm just trying to see what this change is in relation to what we've paid for overall. I, too, am a little weary about this, I think we have to be very careful of protect versus prohibiting. We have to make sure that, you know, at the end of the day, these, these farmers, it's their assets, and it's the assets of the business. And the difference is that they live on these lands, and these are usually generational and family lands, and that's where the gray area is. And, you know, I think the landscape within farming is changing, agricultural, drastically in this province. It used to be everybody had a cow and a garden and, you know, a couple chickens, and they fed themselves, and it's not like that anymore. And so, when we look around our districts and see farms, they're very far and few in between, but they used to be. And while we need to protect that, we also have to understand that farming is, is a way of life, yes, but also their livelihood. And I think we have to be very careful to protect the farmer and, but also, you know, protect, you know, the future of agriculture here in Picta County, so, thank you.
Okay, there, go ahead, Deputy Warden, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think it'd be a good idea for the PAC committee to have a copy of the Anika Nish agriculture one that they passed when they meet, so they can have a look, see what theirs is like. Thank you.
And did you say, Brian, that you would be checking some of, some of the others in the province? Like, I'm thinking we should have maybe two or three even.
Yeah, we can certainly look at the rurals to see what they have in terms of agricultural protection, 'cause a number have just gone through it, so.
And one in East Hans may have been a whole lot harder than one in Anika Nish, I don't know.
Yeah, but we do know Anika Nish, Cumberland, ERMF was going through it at the same time we were going through minimum planning, so there are some examples probably out there, so.
Okay, so, seeing no more lights on, or, wait, Counselor Donnie Parter?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I know there's a lot of farmers out there that are getting their retirement age here, and we're gonna restrict them what they can do with their land, and they're, they can't sell it for what they wanna sell it for, it's gonna limit their retirement income. I just don't think it's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, we'll leave it in the hands of the PAC and their administration, and I'm sure it'll be back around this table before that long. So, that's the end of the correspondence. On to business items not requiring action. So, you received the report on the New Scotland Business Park and the, some of the efforts going on there to finish off some of the sales. Are there any questions on that report? Go ahead, Joe.
Are all the lots sold on that?
Well, they're getting close to it, aren't they? Randy's on that committee, do you wanna speak to that, Randy?
Yes, there are, we got letters of intent pretty well for all of them, right? So, it's just a matter of the, the purchasers are doing their due diligence right now to make sure everything's in, in line, and there's supposed to be construction started here in the fall for, on one, and possibly two of the lots, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions on that report? Seeing none, all those, oh, we need, do we need a motion for that one, or?
No.
No, okay, it's just a report. So, now we'll move on to the resolutions, and we do need motions on these, so the Counselor Dewar, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Resolution be it, be it resolved by the municipality of the county of Picto, approve the following municipal service grant for District 12, Hopple 4-8, 1,500, upkeep of the Eureka War Memorial and ongoing club projects, total 1,500, dated at Picto NS, the second day of September 2025. Signed by myself, Counselor Chester Dorn, seconded by Counselor Andy Thompson.
So, seconded.
You've heard the reading of the resolution for the municipal service grant in District 12, and it's been duly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Now, we'll move on to the next one, Counselor Warden, and tournament sponsorship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution be it resolved, the municipality of the county of Picto approved the following recreation grant in the category of tournament hosting, Northern Nova United Soccer Club, $250 for soccer Nova Scotia Under 13 A Boys Provincial Tournament, for total of $250, dated at Picto Nova Scotia, the second day of September 2025. Signed by myself, Counselor Deborah Warden, and seconded by Counselor Joe McDonald.
So, seconded.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution for tournament sponsorship for under 13 soccer, I think it's already been held. Yeah, the, are there, it's been moved and seconded, are there any questions on that resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Now, we have the appointment of our new development officer, Counselor Palmer, you're looking after that one.
Thank you, Warden. Resolution be it resolved, the municipality of the county of Picto, appoint John Bambell as its development officer, and it rescinds the appointment of former development officer Jeremy Lewis, Dave Picto Nova Scotia, the second day of September 2025, moved by myself, Counselor Randy Palmer, and seconded by Deputy Warden Wayne Murray.
So, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the appointment of our new development officer, and we welcome John, I just met him the other day, but we welcome him to our staff and look forward to working with him. So, it's been moved and seconded, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And Counselor Turner, you're up for the last one, Alma Highway 4 and Patterson Road intersection.
Thank you, Warden. The reason that I asked that this be put on the agenda is that I've had a number of phone calls from the residents in that area, in the Alma area, regarding the accidents that have been taking place at the intersection of the Alma Highway 4 Road and the Patterson Road. So, I'm just looking for support for a letter to be sent to Public Works to see if there's any improvements that can be done to that intersection, perhaps do an engineering, look at it, and see if there's signage or any particular thing that can be done in terms of speed, in terms of lighting, if there's any brush removal or anything in particular that can be done to make an improvement in that intersection. So, that's what I'm looking for. The residents has asked me to bring this forward to council, so brought it forth, and I'm looking for support for the letter. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll have a discussion. I just wanted to say that on the map, I think, just to be clear, when it goes to the department, it shows Patterson Road, which comes down the hill from Springfield Estates, and it shows number four. The actual technical name of the other road is not the Pleasant Valley Road, but it's called Salter Road, just so they won't be, 'cause the Pleasant Valley Road swings off once you get down Salter Roadways, it swings off. So, it's just, I think we need to make sure, 'cause if somebody gets a hold of it down there that doesn't know the area at all, they're just gonna go by the names. It is a dangerous spot, there's no doubt about that, 'cause the traffic on Highway 4 is moving along at a good speed, and it's the other traffic that's supposed to stop both on Salter Road and Patterson Hill. But sometimes they do, and sometimes they do a quick stop. Most of the accidents come when they do a quick stop, which isn't really a stop, it's a slowdown. And when you come out there, if you're coming out on that Salter Road, if you don't do a complete stop, there's a power pole just lines up exactly with where the vehicles are sometimes, you won't, will not see that vehicle. And I checked that pole today, I had to go in to Glasgow, and it doesn't even affect the power at all, it only has a light on it, on top of it, so it could be moved, but that has caused some accidents. Again, if people made a complete stop, you know, there'd be time for that vehicle to move or to line up with the pole, but if they're just doing a slowdown stop, and I know the MLA has talked about this some, and he's not in favor of the light, like, the type of light we have at where the Western Fire Department is, there's a red flashing for the stopping on 376 and a yellow flashing going through number four. He doesn't think those work at all, but it's been there for 100 years, I think. But anyway, it is a bad spot, so I agree with the residents, it should at least be looked at, you know, before we kill any more people, 'cause some have been killed at that corner. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for discussion, go ahead, Counselor Donnie Parter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've had residents contact me on the same issue, 'cause my district is almost at that intersection, but it's been on Facebook pictures of the last accident, and they're worried somebody's gonna get seriously injured there or killed. There has been somebody killed there about 20 years ago. But it's a dangerous intersection by times, what the Warden was talking about with the pole, when you pull up there on the Salter Road, I guess you call it, when you look to the right, there's a pole and a garret rail, tall weeds that's hard to see to the right for some reason. But I talked to Keith McDonald today, and he's, I don't know what his title is, is the area superintendent or something like that for the county, for Department of Public Works, but he, they have a group of people that study these intersections when there's trouble, and they're gonna study it, I guess, and at some point, he'll get back to us, is what he told me. But I think more needs to be done there, and, and I would support a motion to send a letter to the government here to have a look at that intersection and see what they can do to improve it, maybe take that pole out of there, or, there's gotta be something they can do to improve that, 'cause if you, if you start having a whole bunch of little accidents, pretty soon you're gonna have a big one. And we gotta be proactive here, in my opinion, and try to do something about it before that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there any further questions? We have a resolution that's been moved and seconded. Oops, go ahead, Counselor Palmer.
Just wondering if the Counselor Turner, were you talking to the MLA for the, you weren't? See, roads is not our issue, and I know our people call us and everything like that, and as counselors, we try to do our best to help them and everything like that, but this is not one of our, we have no authority here. We can send a letter, but you get better results if the residents call the Department of Public Works instead of us sending a letter, because we send letters all the time. If, if they want something, go through the MLA, let them push for it. If not, pretty soon, the government's gonna say, well, you guys can, here, here's the roads, you guys look after it and see if you can do a better job. And we, I tell you, we definitely don't wanna do that. And we, I tell you, we definitely don't want to do that. But I just can't support the, the motion. Yeah, I know it's a safety thing, but I do believe it should go to the MLA and let him push for that, because it's, it's his residents. That's who, who's calling you, it's his, his residents, so.
Can I respond to that, please?
Go ahead councillor Turner.
I didn't speak to, uh, the MLA directly, but the residents that have been in contact with me, I encourage them very strongly in, to get in touch with their MLA. And I've also asked them to do, uh, a petition, uh, to bring to the MLA as well, that there is community support for change at that intersection. So that's been, that's been, uh, uh, told to the residents in that area. And this is just a supplemental push from council. It's not a, any authority that we have, it's just, it's just a supplemental push, um, to get this, to get this, uh, issue in front of the MLA. That's what it is for, not, not for us to take any, uh, authority over the, over the, the issue, but to, to get it in front of the MLA. And that's, I'd like it to be sent to the superintendent and the MLA as well, so. And, and I, it just, we're just looking for the, to support a council. Thank you.
Councillor Broyles.
Well, myself, I think councillor Palmer's completely wrong on as far as saying that we can't, uh, do something, get things done when it comes to going after the MLAs or whoever we have to go after to help people get things done with the roads. I know a lot of roads that I've got looked after because going after the right people to get it done. And if it wasn't done that way, they'd still be the same way they always were, death traps, so. No, I think it's, it's, it's great that, uh, Larry's taken his own and we all should be there to try our best to get what our constituents need.
And councillor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, and I, I get there's a concern there. I can't support sending a letter to the province. Eleven years ago this month, I was in a violent car accident and, uh, I got rear-ended by somebody doing highway speeds. Um, and that happened in, in my own community of Plymouth. So I understand the concern. I, I live it every day. Um, but do we want to pay for roads? Do we, as a municipality, want to take over roads? Because that's where this is going. Like, and the other issue is, there's, there's confusion in the public of who's responsible for roads, because if you take a complaint to the municipality, we'll write a letter. And that's not the right process. The process is to go through the MLA, that's where the complaint should go to, not through us. We don't own these roads, we are not the traffic authority, we've already made it clear as a municipality and other municipalities that taking over provincially maintained roads would bankrupt us. And that's where this is all heading, if we don't watch what we ask for. This is, like, this Schedule A that the provinces has unleashed on us has not gone away. It was put on pause. They're coming back at this. And if we continue to send letters asking them, we're asking them to spend their budget, they're gonna push back. That's what this government will do. I do not agree with sending letters to the mun, to the provincial government to ask them to pay for something, whether it's a study or whatever, when we don't have any skin in the game. This is not our road. We don't like, like it when the provincial government downloads stuff on us and it works both ways. So that's all I'm gonna say about it. I, I think we gotta be careful what we ask for.
Councillor McKeel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um, while I do understand that this, um, road issue and the possibility of the municipalities taking over roads is a very real issue, I understand that, but our skin in the game in, in this is our residents and they're not, they're our neighbors, they're our friends and unfortunately, you know, in these traffic accidents in our communities, um, you know, i- it is our residents that are paying the ultimate price. And, and while I understand both sides of the argument, at the end of the day, I think that we have to stand up for our, our communities and our neighbors and like councillor Turner said, we are not the driving force in this. It is a supplemental letter to support the residents, um, a- a- on their, uh, request to their MLA about having this intersection looked at. And if we can offer that help, I think it, it's a no-brainer for us. Why wouldn't we, um, be there to support our residents? Thank you.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just make one last point on, um, writing a letter. Um, there's, there's a grand assumption here that because we write a letter, that the province is gonna download roads onto us. I mean, I don't know where that assumption comes from. It doesn't seem to be based in fact, uh, from my perspective anyway, so, uh, we're just simply trying to help the residents, as I said earlier, with a supplemental letter. In terms of, you know, uh, proselytizing what's gonna happen, um, I, I think we're out of our element making predictions about what the province is gonna do in terms of we write a letter, they're gonna download roads on us. That's a grand assumption that I think, uh, that doesn't, it's not based in reality. Thank you.
Go ahead councillor Dower.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, I found that if you sent the letters and did it enough times, they listened to you and got it done. And a perfect example is, of something that we got done was the Abercrombie Road Tree and we pushed hard for that. And that's the major, everybody around this table pretty well. And they were never gonna put another bridge in Springville. There's a bridge in Springville, there's a new bridge in Eureka, they weren't gonna fix the Horse Bridge, they're all fixed, because I was fortunate enough to keep asking and asking and so was Andy for Springville, but I called the late Lloyd Hines and that man was the Minister of Transportation. And when I talked to him and I told him, just split the community and if sometime you're coming up from Geisborough, go up the East River and see what it did with no bridge there. It wasn't, it wasn't a month, we got a letter from the province saying there was gonna be a bridge going Springville. So, if you keep poking the bear, you're gonna get something, right? And until they say, well, okay, we're gonna do this, we, all we have to do is say, no, well, we can't take it, we're gonna go bankrupt or whatever, we can try that, but you gotta try everything you can first to help your people, because most people don't even know who the, well, yes, we're pretty lucky in Picto County, most people know their MLA. Other, uh, areas in Nova Scotia, I doubt if they even do, but we're the one, the grassroots people and that's how we get elected, is looking after those people. And if it means calling the snowplow or calling the Mounties or trying to get the bushes cut on the shoulder of the road, we've been doing it for years and doing a good job of it, so I think we should continue. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just add my two cents worth. I, I think all the time I've been on council, we've always written letters, I always say we're good at writing letters, but we've written letters to, on health issues for sure, if it has to do with the hospital or business, economic issues, if it has to do with trying to get some company here or keep some company here. It's just us adding our voice, as councillor Turner has said, to the residents' voices and the MLA's voice and whatnot. Even the MLA sometime, if they're on side with you, they don't necessarily get their way, especially when we have a junior, uh, MLA, uh, you know, so sometimes those letters of support actually help him and, uh, her in pushing the issue with their fellow legislators in the province. So, I, I don't see a problem, I, I, I don't think we can be forever fearful that the government's gonna do this like they tried to, that can't be the boogeyman here. We have to, uh, you know, do our job the same as we always did it and if they're gonna move in that direction, I think they, they have an awful fight on their hands, so, uh, but we can't be forever fearful of that neither. Okay, are there any more questions or comments on that issue? If not, we'll have the vote, so just to remind people, do we have a, what, what the motion was? It was to write a letter, uh, to support doing a study or whatever at, uh, that, that particular intersection and it was going to the, the MLA and the superintendent. Okay, that's the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against?
Nay.
Two nay votes?
Nays.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move along to consideration of deferred businesses. Is there any deferred businesses this evening? Not hearing any? Uh, so now we have the community announcements. Uh, any community announcements this evening? Go ahead councillor Broyles.
Well, my community has asked me to take it here and, and asked about the tax sales. I mean, we've been told we're gonna have them three different times now and never had them, so they're really, like, what, what, what is council doing? Is there gonna be tax sales or there not gonna be tax sales and when are they gonna be? So, uh, we'd like that answer if we could.
Okay, and by the way, I did ask the, uh, CAO, uh, you know, your question and we knew we'd address it tonight, so, uh, you even mentioned maybe putting the two of them together or something. I'll let Brian answer that question.
Yeah, so I'm working on, um, the tax sale. Um, I had hoped to have it done in August, uh, that didn't happen, so I'm working on it this week. Um, and the second tax sale, um, I'm hoping to have an answer back from the lawyer on that, uh, this week on the status of the title searches for the, the next hundred and fifty.
So, I'll let councillor Broyles follow up.
Well, when, when can we see them in the paper that they're up, so the people wants to, you know, do whatever to, to get some of these, uh, these things? When, when's that gonna happen? Like, one big thing that, uh, today, one fellow came to me, he said, what, the county don't need the money? I mean, it's five years from waiting for a tax sale and, so I just wondered, when is it gonna be in the paper? Are these people gonna see what properties are up?
That's what I'm working on this week, is the ad.
So, be in this week or next week?
Uh, within, yeah, probably within a week, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, or, uh, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, the Burnish River Farmers Markets and Museum is holding markets every Friday night, four to seven this month. Uh, it'll be the fir, for final time of the year, this, end of September. And the American Miss Schoolhouse is having their last outdoor concert this weekend, four to seven, Clay Pigeons in Concert. Thank you.
Well, the second one was a concert, what was the first one at Burnish River?
Uh, Farmers Markets and Museum.
Okay. All right, so that's on every Friday night here for the, next, for the month, okay? Um, go ahead councillor Donnie Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I want to highlight a couple of issues here, a couple, uh, people. I'd like to highlight that, uh, Bill and Betty Lou Scott celebrated their sixtieth wedding anniversary on August twenty-third at the Soul Springs United Church with a large group of family and friends. Uh, they both live up on a beef farm atop of Mount Tom. They have contributed so much to our community in the Mount Tom and Soul Springs area. They're big supporters and leaders in the agricultural industry. Betty Lou has been a four each leader for many years and, and Bill has been involved with the Federation of Agriculture for many years. They're what I call, uh, soul of the earth people. And I have a, one other one that, um, has to do with, uh, a past resident of councillor McKeel's district, um, 'cause the exhibition's on this week. Uh, I'm a volunteer, I volunteer at the Picto North Colchester Exhibition, which starts tomorrow and runs through to Sunday, I believe. Um, Jack Ferguson, just the fellow I'm talking about here, he passed away about a year ago, uh, well-known dairy farmer in Bayview, uh, big farm there, but Jack was a huge supporter and leader of the exhibition for over sixty years. I used to see him all the time there when I was volunteering at the back east. Uh, but as quoted in the advocate, the exhibition was his pride and joy, something he cherished and championed with all his heritage. Uh, just a great guy. I encourage everyone here to come out and, uh, enjoy this year's exhibition. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, and councillor Thompson.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, I just wanted to highlight a couple of, um, events that are happening in, in the East River Valley in the next couple of weeks. Um, on September fourteenth, there'll be a Terry Fox Walk in Bridsville at the, it starts out at the Community Club and they're gonna walk through the community. Um, it's been a longstanding, um, event and the, um, kudos to the volunteers that are continuing the tradition. Uh, also with the Bridsville Community Club, the community got together and, and they built a brand-new accessible ramp and entranceway into the community center, which was, is very, a big gesture for a small community, so, uh, it, it's exciting times in Bridsville and down the road this Saturday, uh, in Springville at the Recreation Park, um, they're having a special event. It's gonna be one of the ones that are sponsored to our Community Connectivity Event Fund. It's, uh, the East River Valley Recreation's going to unveil a memorial ballfield sign in honor of Bob McClain, who was a, uh, long-serving, if anybody in the sports scene, um, he's just a gem of a man, like, he, he passed away and probably ten or twelve years ago, but he was, he was, uh, he was a, he was the glue for a lot of things, like, he was the one that got that ballfield going out in Springville and he helped build the, the ball tradition out there, the Smith Loggers. Um, lot of good ball players and good, good teams went through there and, uh, it's a good celebration of community. We have, uh, it's fully fixed up, the, the facility, it's, it was something to be proud of and, uh, I'm looking forward to the event and it's, uh, a long, long time coming for a lot of the volunteers that, over the last ten years have put a lot of elbow grease and effort into the, into the place and you don't like to single out volunteers, but I've, you heard his name before around this table, but Mike Heckmovich was sort of the, the lead that sort of, uh, um, got things going. We have a, we have the best, and I'm biased included, we have the best outdoor recreation facility in Picto County, I think. It's, it's beautiful, so if you have a chance to come out, there'll be music, I think Ray Stewart's playing and, uh, po- possibly some others and, uh, there'd be a tent set up and barbecue and there's a playground there for kids and it's, it's gonna be a great community day. At one, it's one o'clock from one to four.
What day was that again?
This Saturday, September sixth.
September sixth, okay. Uh, any further community announcements? Okay, I have one and y'all know what it is, uh, because I sent it ahead of time. Um, the, uh, and Andy mentioned in Bridsville, the Terry Fox Walk there on the fourteenth and the one I usually take part in is here in Picto, I don't know what's gonna happen because the, the trail's still closed, unless we get some rain, uh, before then, uh, we're allowed to be walking up down two or three streets, but, uh, so hopefully, uh, we get some rain and, and the forest, uh, opens back up again, the same as it has in Antigunish and Geisborough. Uh, so, I will be, uh, running, or better word is walking, uh, on the Terry Fox, uh, Run on the, uh, fourteenth and, uh, I thank everybody around here for their previous support, it's made a big difference and, uh, I, I trek the roads most days now looking for more support and, uh, try and get up to, I always try and reach where I got to the year before. That means the hill just gets a little steeper every year as you do that, uh, but, uh, it's for a good cause for sure and I, I came to one house yesterday just down four or five below me on Highway three seven six and, uh, asked for the guy that I knew, about forty-five, fifty years old, and, uh, found out he's in the hospital fighting pancreatic cancer. So his son came to the door and he said, isn't that ironic or something? He said that you'd be at the door looking for money to, for cancer research and here dead's in the hospital fighting it. I didn't even know, he said, it was only about three weeks ago, but it can happen all around and you don't even hear sometimes. Uh, there's some young people, particularly young ladies I know that are fighting cancer right now and some of them are only, uh, upper teens, low twenties or whatever, uh, it- It, I always say cancer doesn't care. You know, it doesn't matter what age you are, or what color you are, or gender, if you're rich or poor, cancer doesn't care. And research is the only answer that we have, the only possibility I think we have for an answer. And so I tell people on the doorstep, as long as I can still walk, and I do walk too a lot, but I drive to the ones farther away, then I'll keep doing this until nobody has cancer. And I'm afraid my days of walking will be over before that, so. So if anybody would like to pledge me for that walk, I would certainly appreciate that, and I understand if other people have, people in their communities that they're supporting, that's fine too. But there are a lot less walks now. I think the one Andy mentioned in Bridgeville is the only other one, other than the Peckto one, in this county, and I took part in the Green Hill one for years until it, its leadership, and they talked, Donnie Parker and Andy talked about these two individuals, Bob McLean and it skipped me just at the wrong time, but, Jack Ferguson. You know, people have given so much in the past to make some of the things that we have work. And I know there's a bit of a struggle right now in the exhibition, but their, the show starts tomorrow, and I emphasize what Donnie said, that we need to get out there and support our 4H and support our exhibition, and hopefully things get straightened away there. But there are a lot of good things happening in our county, but we have to get out and support them and encourage people to get out and support them. So I'll be here till midnight, collecting money if anybody's interested. Well, I might not make it quite to midnight, but anyway, thank you in advance, and if there's no further community announcements, I think we're at the bottom of the page. I don't think there's anything more, or is there?
The correction, the exhibition starts Thursday.
Thursday, the 4H day.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
The 4H day is tomorrow?
Yep.
Yeah, and then the exhibition itself starts on Thursday, but you can go and get in tomorrow and see things.
It's free.
Yeah. Everything's free tomorrow. There's not too many things in life for free anymore, so you better go.
4H is a big day.
Oh, yeah, it's a big day for a lot of parents and grandparents and kids and everything. All right, I declare this meeting adjourned.